One thing that I saw as you were going through the capital improvement piece, Melinda, the HVAC repairs at Edgemont and Jeter, can you refresh me on, we did some, I think, just maintenance, some extra extended maintenance before we moved back to school. So, sort of as broadly as you can, what are the issues there with HVAC at Edgemont?
So, what we did back in the summer was to increase the capacity to get the germs out of the ventilation system at Edgemont and Jeter. And what we found since then, that there's major, major problems with some of the units. And we've had Hoffman and Hoffman over there almost once a week trying to repair things like water drainage towers. There have been units that we've had discovered that have to be replaced totally. So it's just a broad range of things that are starting to go wrong with that system, which is now 11 years old. This Hoffman and Hoffman Company has been wonderful with us and have sent over very trained technology, trains on this system that we use, and I can't think of the name or other. They've done outstanding work and have done everything they can. But this annual contract, if we had the money to do it, would be make sure that we're up to speed with all of the requirements for a heating system of this nature. We do have Bowler inspectors that come over, and this would just make sure that we're up to code with everything. But we are paying as we go. We have not paid anything of this nature, of course, but you may have seen bills over the course of the last few board meetings where we've had to repair things at Edgemont and Jeter. But the unit that controls the library went totally out. We've had to order a new unit for that area. It's just seems like we're in tail.
Maintenance needs.
You can continue just to kind of do what we've been doing, pay as we go when repairs need to happen. But I do think if there was extra dollars, this would be a very good way to prevent any major things from happening in that building, which we could not come up with money during one month to pay the bill. So, it's just a suggestion. Yes, there are things that need to be done to some of the restrooms, like installing new doors on the partitions, the bathroom stalls. And yes, we have outlined what could be done at those. And again, that's something that probably was targeted when the walkthrough was done for the joint schools study on the condition of the buildings. They, all of these, most of these things have been documented multiple times somewhere. And we've done what we could, when we can, but it's just time to reconsider what we could do.
So would that include making the stalls wider?
That could be, yes. We do have handicapped accessible stalls in every major restroom there, but yes, that could also be part of what we would do if we were able to do these bathroom renovations, is we'll be able to increase the size of the stalls.
And then thinking ahead to consolidation procedures and things, the more closely we're aligned on any of those things, the easier that feeling will be. So, obviously, we're, with this budget year, I do think we are in a spot where we should be talking with our friends in Long Island about some of the more long-term things that they're looking at, comparing that to what we have here, and then seeing what the impact of, you know, the decisions that we make in the coming months and for a consolidation committee as well.
Is doing their maintenance and upgrades in the buildings?
I'm not aware of that at the moment, but I do know that this morning, Mr. Callahan and I met with our annual meeting, not our annual, our monthly meeting with Mr. Spangler, to talk about what we needed to do for the board meeting, which is this coming Tuesday, but also about budget priorities for the JRTC, because they tried to align themselves with our budget and our raises, and we provide health insurance for their employees. So yes, as far as salaries, Mr. Callahan did share that Allegheny is looking to do something similar, since all of this has changed with the governor recently. But as far as maintenance, about what they're doing in their buildings, I can't answer that. I'm sure they are, but I don't see their budget or their presentations. But can I go back to salaries for just a minute? In years past, and it's been a while since we did this, and the last time we did something similar, Mr. Baker was a part of a committee that worked with the superintendent and the human resources director to look at salary scales. And I think perhaps this is a time for an appointed committee of this group, of your, of this school board, perhaps works with Darlene, with human resources, Rebecca with finance, and myself, to talk about this salary and some of the impacts that not only will this 5%, whatever we decide to do, could do to our salary scales, but also what the increase in, what did we just talk about?
Health insurance.
Health insurance, as well as the increase in minimum wage. I think now's the time to look at a lot of different areas to decide what should the salary scales look like. Sometimes when one thing happens, it's a good thing to segue into something else, like maybe we need to look at some of our salary scales again and not do anything but provide support to our employees, but look at different ways to do salaries, like we did for our bus drivers. So, I don't know if Ms. Preston and Mr. Baker, or whoever could be appointed, could work with the three of us here at the central office. And it'd have to happen very quickly, because we've got to get a budget, but we need to look at our salary scales, and I think now's a good time to possibly do that.
I think what we want to do is just give people an increase and get them off the scale thing, because that's just a button to the top of the bag. I think everyone needs to be on a step. So if you're going to provide a salary increase, whatever that may be, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5%, or some combination between the two by any of them, it's more the impact of salary scales. So we just, they're going to be revised.
Okay, that feels good. Me, Melinda, I'm willing to work with you. I understand it's something that we have to do quickly, so we can stay in alignment. And like Jonathan mentioned, you know, we're going into a consolidated school system, so we have to look at that as well. I'm available, just let me know. Mr. Baker, since you were instrumental in this process, yes, I remember that. I had just come on board at that time. Would you be available to assist us in this endeavor?
Sure, but I don't know if I'll be on that committee, because I'm in favor of giving them all the money they need. But not everybody likes that.
I appreciate your willingness to assist us, and it's something that we do need to do, and this is a good time to take a look at everything and do our best. And I'm like Mr. Baker, I'll just have to say upfront, I want to do all that we can for our staff. So, and I know everyone believes that as well, we do it. We have parameters with how much, we don't know how much we're going to get to do this, so we still have a lot of work to do, but we can start the conversations now, I believe, and take a look at what we have. And I do think, as Ms. Irvin pointed out, that maybe some of the additional staff that we could need to support the learning loss could be something that we can consider funding out of the CARES dollars, because I think that's a big piece of the latest CARES funding rules is for learning loss. So, and our summer programs as well, summer and after-school programs.
Something I was thinking about regarding CARES, how it relates to potential increase salaries, because the social distancing, et cetera, you're limited to the number of kids you can hold on to.
Right.
So it may run additional, same thing if you're, the Clemson Institute schools, because you have to staff, have more staff to meet those standards, I think that would, as well.
Yes. The Edgemont instructional needs, they did ask for an additional special ed teacher at Edgemont. And then Jeter Watson, on that slide, there is a need to replace the retiring special ed teacher, and that money is currently in our budget for right now at the salary of the retiring teacher. So yes, it's in there, yes.
Okay. Now, is EPS asking for a special ed teacher as well? Is that current?
Yes, they are. No, Mrs. Morgan has asked for an additional special ed teacher for Edgemont.
Okay, all right.
Do we have any rough estimates of what some of those things will cost? I mean, I'm generally a fan, if you have a list like this, to try to clear off the smaller items there, just get them out of your way.
Yes, yes, we do. They might be a year old, but we do have estimates, and I can provide that to you all. We're currently having a company look at what the lighting upgrades could cost us at CHS. I've been given a cost for the Burton Field repair and the track repair a couple of years ago. The technology upgrades, Dr. Furman keeps a rolling list of that, and sometimes VPSA funds can be used to take care of that. Painting, we've looked at the cost of that. We've gotten a cost for the walking track at Edgemont and Jeter. The HVAC maintenance, so yes, I can give you all some cost. And yes, I agree that if we can do it with what we currently have, we should do it. And when you look at some of the needs, instructional needs, and what the staff at the different buildings have asked for, some of those things we're trying to do right now with money that we do have. So we always try to do that every year, is to take care of what we can take care of when the opportunity arises. We can't do everything, but we try to do what we can do.
To even bathroom renovations, I mean, kind of up that, if you're going to remodel your own bathroom, you can give at least a fair idea of what some of these things cost. What it starts with asbestos removal. Do we know what percentage we have left?
There's one area at CHS, and I can get our contractor to come back over and tell us what that might cost.
Yeah, I think for capital improvement planning, for our facilities, to me, I mean, it's kind of, this list without any, you know, estimates attached to it, if they're just kind of broad enough, it's kind of difficult, you almost just kind of eating money through the, you know, because again, I think that's a, that's a pretty big meal that we're trying to eat all at once. So, I think, I'm a fan of, if we have the availability to knock out some of the lesser expensive items, that would be my preference, I think, for all our little capital stuff, is to clear some of these ways, so that we're not looking at them again next year. Some of these things we know are going to be multi-year projects, or just perpetual, you know, we'll have to keep doing these things, we know that. But, you know, bathroom upgrades, Burton Field wall, you know, repairs, that sort of thing, asbestos removal, these are all things that are, they're going to have a start date and cost six years, and then won't be such a concern.
The only thing that Mr. Dressler has mentioned to me each year when we take a look at this is that our population is getting larger, and perhaps we need a larger vehicle than that small car. And it's true, just like the seats at CHS, you know, maybe we need to get a little bit larger, more with sedan size instead of a compact size. That's just a thought, but that's, that's the only thing I've heard.
That's sort of, that's a double-edged sword too, because I could probably make the case that a slightly larger vehicle would be a little bit more instructive for the students. They, you know, would have to take a little greater care of the things that they were doing, but I think also a larger vehicle introduces the possibility of, you know, fender benders and a little parking lot mishap.
That's true, too, yes.
If it's, you know, too large. But I'm just curious, had not really ever entertained that thought.
No. And we do have a public hearing scheduled, or we think we're going to have a public hearing at 6 o'clock on Monday night before our board meeting, which is at 6:30. We plan to advertise for that. So we do need to have one, just to hear what the public might have to say about the needs of the school division. Thank you, Dr. Furman.
As far as the doing for staff and students, by all means, I confer with each one of you, I think anything we can do for our staff and students, that's certainly plus, and we all want, want that. Concerning the instructional positions, I know we, we're going to have some staff meetings and discussions with principals in length. I think it's important to know instructionally, you know, what we need and where we're going, and why would we say we need this many staff members? And since instruction has changed, I wouldn't even begin to measure the, how it was changed last March. And needs are different, delivery's different, so we really need to have some conversation in there to talk about that. Obviously, with the instructional piece and the online learning, the technology has really ramped up, and, you know, a technology support position would probably serve us well, as opposed to an instructional technology position, you know, when we get our 1,000 Chromebooks back in, end of June, that we need to touch each one and push back out in August, and, you know, our help desk that we've done, and you all have my technology list. I just tried, as Ms. Lee Johnson said, make a running tally of what's going on in all of our upgrades, and I will present that, I don't know, maybe in April. But just wanted to, you know, talk about the technology. I mean, our technology team, a big shout out to them, but they've done well, and we work hard, and I know we will continue, and we will continue to support the teachers and the students, both in the building and out of the building. So, you know, looking forward to meeting with the principals and Ms. Lee Johnson to really focus on this instructional piece and see what we can do moving forward to benefit everyone. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Well, could I just say one thing before it goes out of the top of my head? But anyway, Mrs. Morgan has specified which grade level she feels that she needs additional support because of the numbers of students. And Mr. Bennett has somewhat, he has a large third, rising third into fourth grades coming in. So we've talked about shifting positions around and moving with the grade level, so we've done a lot of that. But we will continue to fine tune those conversations about how many, do we need any, and what do we need, and why do we need it? We're just not saying that, you know, well, first of all, we've got to have money to do what we need to do, and second of all, there's opportunities, virtual learning, that we're still trying to weed out what's best for our students and our staff. So we still have a lot of, a lot of room to grow. But Mr. Eric?
I have one question to Dr. Furman, as it relates to technology, just sort of generically says equipment and software for technology. Software doesn't concern me too awful much, a lot of times that's a license type thing, even expensive software is usually pretty easy to justify, or, you know, it's easy to see how it feels could be, put it that way. Are there any specific equipment or hardware type things that we anticipate needing that we more precisely identify with or prefer?
I don't know that equipment's the, would be the right word, but the big ticket items would be infrastructure. And we have consciously moved a lot of things to the cloud, and that was advantageous, you know, last March, so we will continue to do that. So I think that, if you want to say equipment, software, I mean, we use that loosely, but I think with some upgrades, just one that just comes to mind, document cameras, things like that, peripherals, maybe that a teacher would need to teach in an online environment, you know, a doc cam versus a laptop, maybe they need a webcam, you know, or upgrade what they have in the classroom, a laptop, a desktop PC, if they're going to teach synchronously. And we've inventoried kind of each teacher to see, you know, what they have and what they need moving forward. Because we have some teachers, as, I had a conversation today, some of the Jeter Watson teachers, they're teaching their A group in class, they have their B group right now at home, and then they have their 100% online group. So they're really teaching like three classes, and they've needed extra equipment or, you know, something online to help with that student who maybe needs to read aloud. That's not off the cuff answer.
No, that's exactly what I was interested in, because, I mean, when it relates to technology equipment, like if we're talking about just simple desktop PCs, I mean, there's quite a range as to what, what the cost, depending on what the PC is needed for. So that's, you know, more average use type PCs that I think we would be more utilizing are far less expensive than some of the more specialized pieces of hardware. And there's, there's computer components out there from the latest processors to different, different graphics cards and things like that, that thousands of dollars. So, I didn't think we were building gaming PCs here with kind of graphics cards, but I do, you know, I understand that our technology needs are not just, you know, straightening across the board, we need other needs. So, I was just wondering if there were any of the bigger technical items that we really need to pay attention to, so thank you.
Well, and every now and then, we'll, we will need, something will come up like a server, we were working on something at CHS a couple of weeks ago, and we're going to repurpose a server we have, but if we, and we need a Sequel license for it, so we will purchase that. But if, if something would go awry and we would need a server, then you, you know, you get a server. So that, that would be a big piece of equipment.
So, in the notebook that we put together, Dr. Furman did outline technology budgets, some items that she thought she might need, they were going to look at. But she, in a conversation today, she told me that that might need to change, because some things, like the server's already been repurposed and rebuilt. So, technology changes all the time, but I'd like to just do a shout out, I guess, when Dr. Furman was talking about her technology team, they've been wonderful. The teachers that are teaching three groups, Group A that's in the, Team A that's in the building, Team B that's home, and then the team, the virtual learners, our staff has done a wonderful job of learning this new technology and this new remote learning piece. And the coordination from Dr. Furman's team to the principals, to the teachers who are become experts at Canvas, our learning management system, I just can't have any more praise than I can muster right now to thank them for what they've done. Which leads me back to, again, we're in a different world with education today, and we've got to continue to do our technology needs as we need to upgrade.
And I don't think we're going back.
I don't, no.
And the high school teachers as well, you know, I certainly would not leave out Covington High School, because, you know, they're not on an A/B schedule, but they have one block a day, so they do have students, you know, at home, plus they have their 100% online students as well. So they too have the same situation with teaching multiple groups at one time.
And I didn't mean to leave that group out, so I'll just.
No, I did that, so I wanted to make sure that I included everyone.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Cantrell, Ms. Hale, Ms. Tyree, and myself have continuously monitored the COVID-19 metrics and mitigation strategies related to VHSL spectators at home athletic events. It's our consensus that the protocol we will be following for spectators at the game is as follows. Home football games, we'll get two tickets per player format, two tickets per player for the home team. The band and cheerleaders will get to come for the home team, and the two tickets per player for away team. There's a 250 maximum number of outdoor participants, but this is what we feel we can manage with COVID. And indoor games, there is a limit of 25, home spectators only. Each player on the volleyball team of 12 has two tickets, the coach gets the 25th ticket. Everyone wears masks and sits six feet apart outside of people from the same household. We feel that this is the protocol that we can manage during this challenging time. We did live stream some volleyball games this week, I don't know if anyone had an opportunity to look at it, but it went very well, and I put, included that link. We will have a home football game this week. I'm not sure about the time, but we did play one away game, and I'm sure you've, and volleyball team did have a game the first night against Bath County and was very successful, I'm not sure about last night's score. But that's just an upgrade, update about what we're doing to manage the situation with COVID, and follow all the executive orders of the governor and the VHSL, and we feel very comfortable with that. And then the last thing I wanted to bring to you all was a document about school mergers, where we had talked in the past about possibly going and doing some Zoom meetings to share with our staff what we know about the upcoming consolidation effort, and I had a document that you've looked at, that we could set some dates, and you all, we could do a Zoom meeting with our staff. So I have the document, if you'd like to consider talking about it tonight, or signing off on it, and then us figure out the dates, but any discussion about that possibility?
I'm in favor of as much communication back and forth between our faculty and staff and us, and just getting as much information as we can out there. You know, we're obviously still somewhat in the position that we have been, in that there are some things out there that cannot be definitively answered, you know, written in stone, but I think we have as clear a indication today, as we said here, as we need to, to give some, to get some good answers, or at least the list of possibilities, the things that will be explored, you know, and various questions that could be asked. And I know that a lot of them will, will be things about personnel type issues, obviously that are the front and center on our faculty and staff minds, and we even have some store for things that we can kind of rely upon, and other localities that down in these types of situations. So again, I think we have enough information, so if not definitively answer things, we can, can give people, you know, a good list of possibilities. So I'm, I'm in favor of doing that via Zoom, indoor, any other combinations, if anybody else has any other ideas as well.
I had someone approach me with an idea, a coworker at my school. She lived, she's from West Virginia, and the school system, where she went to school, merged, and she said, one of the things that they did was that they did exchange student days, where a group of students, and I know we will have to think about how that would work in COVID, but a group would go, say to Covington High School from Allegheny, and a group from Covington to Allegheny, and try to forge some relationships and that sort of thing. And I, as I thought about that, I thought that's a good idea, but I would love to see us take the initiative to do the same thing with staffing, you know? Administration, you guys already are connected to some degree, but when you take the classroom teachers, we're not so much. And, so I would like to see something like that, and I, I know that's down the road, but I just wanted to throw it out there while it was on my mind. But I think, you know, any way that we can forge relationships between the students and the staff would be advantageous for all of us.
And I think that's an outstanding idea. I know Mr. Callahan and I had talked about in the month of March, which is now March, about possibly doing something with the staffs coming together. That hadn't happened yet, but I do think those steps need to take place sooner than later. And students need to see that the buildings are comparable, and the people are warm and friendly, and we do need to move on. Those are excellent ideas, so.
Central office is, because of JRTC, if we know of, the superintendents and central offices, staffs have traditionally cooperated on a wide range of things. And I do, I do think that that is a good idea to the. And I do, I do think that that is a good idea, to the degree that we can, and obviously there's lots of other things that we need to be doing as well, but to the degree that we can kind of foster, you know, a higher level of communication in the interim before we get there. I think, I've always got an impression, I mean, from talking with teachers all of my life, I think Ms. Lee Johnson and I have had this conversation before, if you're a teacher in an area like this, you generally, you know, you have a lot of other teaching friends, and they may not be your direct colleagues, you know, the division. So I think a lot of our faculty in that area know each other, at least to a certain degree. I do think it's just more familiarity among, you know, teaching professionals around our area, that's not a problem.
I think that anything we can do proactively to create relationships would be important, an important step. And I will tell you that Clifton Middle School, and I talked to Dr. Furman today, we're looking at possibly changing our schedule, and, you know, I made the remark in leadership that we need to move the block, because that's what Covington High School, Allegheny High School, and Jeter Watson are on, and it doesn't make sense for us to do anything different when we're going to be merging. So, you know, I am out there on the other side promoting the same thing to our, to where I work, as I am as a board member, asking you to consider this for, for the future, so.
So tonight, all we would like to have is your signature and your okay that we start planning this for perhaps the end of March or the first of April, something like that. Just another gesture, like Mr. Eric has said, when we did do those face-to-face meetings of communicating with staff and letting them have an opportunity to speak and share their viewpoints.
Right, and one of the, going back to some of the things that we went through, it's one of the research, consolidation, one was to extrude documents that I came across, was Ms. Mary Burton's dissertation on Allegheny and Clifton Fords merger, and she highlighted this several times throughout, you know, 100-year-something document. The then-staff of Clifton Fords and Allegheny, when they came together, they were sure that it was several years after the new division was formed, but one of the things that all the faculty and staff, the administration, and that school board had asked for was good communication, because obviously, when you're, when you're changing anything, people have lots of questions about how that will impact them. So, like I said, going back to my first one, to the degree that we can foster some communication, I'm all for it, so.